Excuse me. This evening we call to order the meeting of the Union Township Planning Board, Thursday, May 25th, 2023.
Yeah, is his mic on? Let her check your mic.
There it is.
Fantastic.
There we go.
All right, thank you. All right, this evening we call to order the meeting of the Union Township Planning Board, Thursday, May 25th, 2023. Mr. Ralich, would you please recite Sunshine Law?
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting stating the time and place was satisfied by the filing of an annual notice with the local source and the Star Ledger, newspapers of general circulation within the township of Union and posted on the bulletin board of the Township of Union Municipal Building.
Thank you, Mr. Ralich. Roll call, please.
Ms. Frazier. Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Perkins.
Here.
Reverend Starling. Mayor Figurito.
Here.
Committeeman Bowser.
Here.
Ms. Ricketts. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Chairman Johnson.
Here.
All right, let's move right along to the planning board minutes of April 27th, 2023. Could I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, move the adoption of the minutes of the April 27th meeting.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Figurito.
Abstaining, not present.
Mr. Bowser.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Chairman Johnson.
Yes. All right, Ms. Russell, I understand you have a presentation to be made.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm here tonight to present, um...
Mrs. Patrick.
I'm sorry. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give the board tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
For the record, Kristen Russell with Colliers Engineering and Design. I'm here tonight to present to you an area in need of redevelopment study. We're calling this the Liberty Avenue Area in Need of Redevelopment Study, but you may all be a little bit more familiar with it as it's locally known as the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond site. And it's not advancing. All right, we'll do it this way. So for context, this is four parcels. The total acreage of them combined is 35.6 acres. As I mentioned in the introduction, this is the headquarters for Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, which I think we all have heard in the news are going out of business. The main roads along this... Along the site are Springfield Road, Liberty Avenue, and then Ridge Drive. There are industrial uses surrounding it to the south and east and residential to the north. The existing zoning of the site is commercial industrial, and this allows a wide variety of uses, some of which are manufacturing, research labs, data centers, offices, so on and so forth. The zone has a minimum lot area of 80,000 square feet and a minimum, excuse me, maximum building height of 45 feet. So when I come to you presenting an area in need study, I'm often explaining to you my findings that a site was deteriorated or buildings are in very bad condition. That's not so much the case here. So instead of using the criteria that you often hear me talking about, tonight, we're talking about the discontinuance of use. The municipal land use law, excuse me, the local redevelopment housing law considers the discontinuance of use of a building or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping malls or plazas, office parks, manufacturing, or industrial purposes. The abandonment of such building or buildings, significant vacancies of such building or buildings for at least two consecutive years, or the same being allowed to fall into a state of disrepair as to be untenable. So the phrase that we catch on in this study is significant vacancies of such building or buildings for at least two consecutive years. I will also touch upon criterion H, which we always talk about when we're doing these studies, and that is the designation of the delineated area as being consistent with smart growth planning principles adopted pursuant to law or regulation. I want to give you a little bit of history of the site. We'll just go through these kind of quickly. In 1931, it was farmland. In 1954, we saw some development taking place, and you can start, excuse me, around the site, you can start to see some suburbanization. In 1966, it's really being intensified, the suburbanization, the use on site. You can see some, a lot of cars in the parking lots. And then not a whole lot changes between 1966 and more or less today. In 2017, we see the same type of development going on. The small parcel that is now a parking lot, there had been a building on that site previously, but by 2017, that had been removed. And this picture from 2017 is reflective of today's conditions, aside from the fact that there are no longer cars in the parking lot. I'm going to go through each of the four lots, and if you look at the top right of your screen, there's a little map to help you locate where we're talking about. The parcel that is colored in yellow is the parcel that we're talking about. So Block 3401, Lot 10, this is on the south side of the site, it, of the study area, pardon me. It's 4.7 acres with frontage on Springfield Road. It's a one-story office building with several hundred surface parking stalls, and it is vacant, but the property is fairly well-maintained. Adjacent to that, we have Block 3504, Lot 2. This is the largest site of the four at 19 acres at the southwest corner of Liberty Avenue and Ridge Drive. Ridge Drive is not, the vehicle access is from Liberty Avenue, and that's the main street that you would associate it with. It's a two-story office building, again, with several hundreds surface parking stalls, and again, vacant but well-maintained. Crossing Ridge, we're now at Block 3503, Lot 1.01. This is a 9.38 acre site with the third building. It is a one- and two-story office building, again, with several hundred parking spaces to the sides and rear, and again, vacant but well-maintained. And this is a site that abuts residential uses to the north and west. The fourth parcel is 3702, Lot 1, and this is currently a surface parking lot, but it's sitting there vacant at this time now that the employees of the business are no longer working there. It's 1.96 acres. An unimproved paper street extension of Ridge Drive runs along the south side, but driveways are from Liberty and Rahway avenues. Both are blocked off, so nobody's making use of this site now that Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is no longer operating. There are also some flood concerns on the property. This map, you can see kind of running through the left-hand side of the map, you can see flood areas colored in. Block 3401, Lot 10, that's the southernmost lot, is a known contaminated site with, and monitoring and remediation is going on. That's not to say that there's any immediate hazard there, but at one point in time, there was, and that is cleaned up and with ongoing monitoring. There are also three flood areas in that zone. AE, AE, three, and a 2% annual, I always mix this up, a 0.2% annual chance flood zone and a floodway. All this just to say that developing on a site that has flood concerns is all, adds an added burden to these sites. So it, sometimes these sites need to be incentivized because of this burden. Block 3401, Lot 2, which is just immediately, the big parcel, immediately adjacent to Lot 10, is also into flood zones, AE, and a 0.2% annual chance flood zone. And then the one, the parcel above that, Block 3503, Lot 1.01, is also a known contaminated site. They did receive a no further action letter, but monitoring is ongoing. So as I mentioned in the introduction to this presentation, this area in need seems to qualify best under criterion B. And this is the criterion where vacancies of such building or buildings for at least two consecutive years qualify. The grad, the area has been gradually falling into underutilization for the past six years, and for the past two years, the building saw a maximum of 58% occupancy. It's now near zero. I spoke to somebody from Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, an executive from the company, and he indicated that the national downsizing of Bed Bath &amp; Beyond was similarly reflected in the local downsizing of the offices. So in 2019, they were at 95% occupancy, and by 2021, we're down to 58. 2022, down to 46. And like I said, now, today, they're near zero. When I went and visited the site, there were still some cars there, and I think that they're just really like wrapping things up and that sort of thing. I would also, however, like to point out that the occupancy numbers are actually employment numbers. So the company, I maybe should have worded this better, in 2019, it was 95% occupancy, and that probably did mean that they were at 95% employment. But when we look at 2020 and 2021, I'll take 2021 as an example, 58% occupancy, what that actually means is 58% employment. And we know what was going on in 2021 and 2020, and not everybody was going to the office. So even though the employment rolls had 58%, the people showing up in the office was even less. So this is a really conservative number. If everybody who was still employed by the company went into work, in 2022, it would have been at 46% occupancy. On a day-to-day basis, it would have been nowhere near there. But even if it was, these numbers would qualify it under criterion B as vacancy for the past two, vacancy or increasing vacancy for the past two years. And criterion H, which we always talk about, it addresses the state goal, state plan vision of smart growth, which is to say directing growth into communities that have the infrastructure to handle it, into concentrated nodes, into planning areas that are older suburbs, and Union, on the state plan map qualifies as that type of area. So any redevelopment plan that happens in Union, I can't think of any reason that there would be an exception to this, would qualify under criterion H, because we're accommodating state growth within the state. We are concentrating populations in a way that is sustainable to preserve other parts of the state where, you know, maybe it's a more agricultural or rural environment. It kind of says Union's doing its part to properly house and accommodate the businesses that are needed throughout the state. So all of this to say is that the Liberty Avenue Area in Need of Redevelopment Study, or the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond site, does qualify as an area in need under criterions B and H. The site has seen increasing vacancy, not only over the past two years, but well beyond that into the past five or six years, but in the past two years, it has been so substantial as to qualify. And as we all know, in the immediate future, that site will be completely unused because of the company's closure. I'd be happy to take questions about the study.
Questions from the board?
So did the, does Bed Bath &amp; Beyond currently own the property? Is that part of their assets, or were they renting?
Owning.
They owned it?
Owning.
Any other questions from the board? Questions from the public? Is that the end of your presentation?
That's the end of my presentation, if you don't have any other questions.
Would you like us to move to approve the Liberty Avenue Need and Redevelopment?
Yes, the next step in this would, would be preparing a redevelopment plan. This is the area in need study. You would forward this to the Township Committee and with your recommendation, and ultimately, they're the ones who adopt it.
Could I have a motion that the resolution Liberty Avenue Area in Need of Redevelopment, otherwise known as Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, be approved?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Figurito.
Yes.
Committeeman Bowser.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Chairman Johnson.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Before we call the other topics we have on the display, Mrs. Patrick, would you please swear in, Mr. Hatter?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give the board tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I see the representative from Silver Associates. Please identify yourself to the record, please.
Good evening. John Giorgi, G.I.O.R.G.I., on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the public. Hello?
There we go.
John Giorgi, G.I.O.R.G.I., on behalf of applicant. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Mayor, members of the public. I believe last time I were here, my client, along with his architect and engineer, put forth a compelling case for approval. I understand that since that time, we were asked to try to, you know, quell some of the concerns of the neighbors. I've spoken to my client, and he's prepared to put a PVC fence or landscaping sufficient to comply with the board's conditional approval to satisfy the neighbors. We do not believe at this point in time, given the distance, I think it was over 130 feet from the last occupied building to the property line, we did not measure the property line to the neighbors' properties, but we believe, given that length, we don't believe there will be any site disturbances that will cause any neighbors any concern. However, my client is willing to comply with either PVC fence or landscaping. Okay? My client has also went back to the site and reaffirmed that in the 55-gallon drums is nothing more than what we call roadstone or just topsoil or a combination. He's already gone through a Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental, and those 55-gallon drums were investigated before he purchased the property, and if the site is approved, regardless of what happens, he does plan on removing those 55-gallon drums so the neighbors should be concerned. With respect to the lighting, he did put forth a lighting example where there should be no cast of shadow whatsoever. There are seven spots in the back. It's located on spot number two. I did discuss with my client about locating the pole to the rear of the parking spaces, but between his engineer and architect, they confirm that won't be sufficient lighting for those people. Okay? I'm not here to testify, but as an added benefit, we do have the president of the International Longshoremen's Association, and although he's not being called to testify, I can represent to the board that he's a former resident of Union, grew up through the school system, Battle Hill, and then Burnett, and he's eager to return to Union with his staff at this site. So having said that, I do understand the engineer got a chance to review the project. Now, there's an upper bound when you do a project like this. He's already in for the architecture plans, he's already in for the engineer. Some of the things that your engineer is asking for, he doesn't want to do until there's approval. So why spend tens of thousands of dollars on a structural engineer, which is one of the things the engineer has asked for? So I don't know, I'll read them into the record, what the engineers ask for, and my client is prepared to comply with each of these items. Your engineer says, if approved, the applicant must comply with the follows. Obtain a flood hazard permit.
Mr. George, what page do you want, sir?
We're on page, the last page, page 5 of 6, of Mr. Venezia's letter, dated May 2nd, 2023.
Got it, thank you.
My client is prepared to comply with, number one, prepare a flood hazard permit. He's got to do that from the NJDEP. Number two, a licensed structural engineer, there's been a lot of talk about whether the building's structurally sound. Obviously, he could pour the concrete solid, he could add block, he could pin it, he could do a number of things, which will be discussed by the structural engineer. He's fully prepared to comply with that request. Number three, with respect to the lighting, we feel we've already complied, but once again, he will make sure that the lumens from the light will not exceed the allowable lumens. Engineering estimate off-site, on-site, he plans on doing, he has to do anyway. And as far as the approval of number five, Somerset Union disturbance, TWA approval, sanitary flow, he has to do, in Union County Planning Board. And specifically, it's even said that the applicant will attend a pre-construction meeting. He's eager to do that if the plans are approved, but we can't put the cart before the horse. If it's approved, and like I said, the gentleman in the front, not too many people could pull off facial hair like that. I don't know if you guys remember rally fingers, but the president of the association is there. If you want to hear from him and how many people he employs and what activity they will conduct, I know there's some concerns about deliveries. He said the only time he plans on doing deliveries is the annual basis where he gets hoodies and sweatshirts from all his employees, and they stop by and pick up a hoodie and shirt, but that's a one-time event. Other than that, it'll be normal office supplies and an occasional food delivery. And I think he said there's only seven employees. I think there was previous testimony, there might be 11, there's only seven. And he did also confirm there's no ATM at the credit union, and that credit union is only for members of the Longshoremen Association, and not all of them bank there. It's a percentage, not all of them bank there. But if you do want to hear from anyone, the architect's here, the engineer's here, my client's here, the president of the Longshoremen's Association's here. So whatever you do, don't shake his hands like a vice grip. I forgot his name as soon as he shook my hand, but he is here if you do need to hear from him. But I believe based upon the information we have submitted, based upon the review of the engineer, we will comply, but we need to know what direction the board is going in. And I will make one more comment, and speaking to the president of the Union, he did say to me, I believe this site is unchanged from when I went to grammar school. I haven't been by there since grammar school, because I graduated grammar school years ago, but he does appear to be younger than me, so something has to be done at this site. And one of the things I did discuss with my client is if he puts his construction company there with backhoes and bobcat machines, it's obviously a lot less attractive than the buildings he plans on building and the tenant he plans on putting there.
Well, first off, Mr. George, I want to thank you for cooperating with the Sun's project. I know it's important for you and for your client, and I think you've done a very, very impressive job representing your client's interests, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hatter, do we have any questions to follow up on?
Well, as I understand it, what you've said, in essence, is that you agree with the five conditions.
I believe that if it's a condition, my client does plan on complying with those things. And it's part of the reason I discussed with him that he's separating the buildings, because if you were to put one building, and there would be some type of flood, it may have a catastrophic offense, where if you put two buildings, there'll be surface water flow. We don't anticipate that, but we have to, we have to plan for it, right? So I think he's here, and he does plan on complying, and I talked to the engineer, and he said, yes, we can comply with those things. And if we can get approval, but it's very difficult to spend money on something where it's speculative in nature. If we don't get approval, if you say, hey, we want to put a billboard there, why would we go down through all these tasks that we have to do? So I do believe if you need to hear from...
Just to clarify, these were conditions assuming the board approved this application, okay?
Correct.
They would be incorporated into the resolution of approval.
Correct.
Okay, so we're not asking your client...
Right.
...to demonstrate compliance with these five points before the approval is given.
Could you give me one second, please?
Yeah.
I just want to confirm, I thought I had said that, that if there was approval, we did plan on complying, but just for the record, if there is approval from the board, my client plans on complying with the five items delineated in your letter of May 2nd that appear on page five of your letter.
And as a condition also, Mr. Giorgi, if, whatever reason, it doesn't happen, then of course, we'll reserve the right to revisit the issue down the road, but I think, it sounds to me like you're on board as far as these things go.
Yes, yes.
No.
Can you hear, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
No. Sorry. How's that? Okay. All right. All right, any questions from the board?
The gentleman from the audience had a question.
Yeah, no, we're gonna get that.
Oh, okay.
Questions from the board? Questions from the public?
I just couldn't hear, could you read what you said?
I'm sorry?
I couldn't hear what you said, could you read what you said?
Questions from the public?
I think he wants to make it clear about the five delineated.
What we're going to do is we have, and I don't know if you have it, sir, you're more than welcome to a copy of it, there's a letter that it made of 2nd, 2023. If you remember, at the last meeting, there was a lot of questions that the board had that we provided the applicant the opportunity to follow up with us to get those answers to those questions. He has given us a five-prong, we have received a five-prong condition to approve the matter tonight. And what it includes, frankly, sir, is the applicant shall either obtain a flood hazard area permit from the DEP, or a letter from them stating that a permit will not be required, number one. Number two, the applicant shall provide a letter prepared by a licensed structural engineer that the rear building will be structurally sound to support the green roof. And submission, number three, the submission of a revised site lighting plan on sheet S4 with lighting levels not exceeding 0.5-foot candles along all property lines. They've agreed to that as a condition. Number four, the applicant shall provide an engineer's estimate of the onsite and offsite improvements for purposes of posting a performance guarantee, inspection, and testing escrow fee. So that's also being met. And number five, the last one, applicant shall obtain approval waivers from the following agencies, Somerset Union SCD, if the area of disturbance exceeds 5,000 square foot, JMEUC, TWA approval, if the added sanitary flow exceeds 8,000 GPT, and the Union County Planning Board. So they have agreed to that. As we're going to take a roll call vote in a few minutes to approve, as a condition of the approval, we expect these conditions to be met, and if for whatever reason they're not met, then we will reserve the right to revisit the issue down the road. Is that okay?
Mr. Chair, just again to clarify, if I understood you correctly, sir, there was an issue with the structural engineer and having that performance done unless this was approved, is that what I'm hearing?
So there's a site plan engineer and there's a structural engineer, right? So you're asking us to certify a structure that hasn't even been approved to build?
Correct.
So my client obviously has to get a structural engineer in order to erect that green roof, because there is a certain amount of weight associated with the green roof. But of course, he didn't want to retain that expert at $8,000 initial retainer if he's not going to build a building with a green roof. But if approved, he will comply and hire a structural engineer and give certain specifications to your township engineer to meet the approval of, to support the way to the green roof. Right, that's clear.
So in my mind, sir, it appears, and Mr. Chair, it appears that it's not so much a question of if, as a question of when.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Am I, is another condition that we will be incorporating into our approval, that the applicant has agreed to provide PVC fence and/or landscaping to buffer the residential properties?
What do you see that, sir? Is that on?
That was the first thing that counsel mentioned.
So we had mentioned the fact that there's a fence at the rear of the property. According to my clients, off the property. However, I understand the concern of the neighbor was that there would be either debris that would leave this property and go on the neighboring property, or light disturbance, which would go beyond this property and onto his property. So my client has said that whatever is required, if it's landscaping, a landscape buffer, which he plans on doing anyway, or the erection of a PVC fence along the rear of the property, he will do that, because he does not want the neighbors to think that there's going to be any interference from the occupancy of this building, or the presence of this building, or the construction of the building, that will cause an off-site problem of his property, because the same resident that voiced the concern is the same resident that's here. They plan on being good neighbors, they plan on being good occupants of the building. So if that's a requirement, either or. I discussed with him the fact that it's probably nicer to see landscaping, but if it's a requirement of the board of PVC fence, he'll put a PVC fence. That's low-hanging fruit as far as he's concerned. He wants the neighbors happy. It might be better for landscaping if water's going to flow on the property. That's why I mentioned that he'll do either or.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the public? Okay. I'd like to take a motion for application 2022-16, that this application be approved under the condition that the five requirements documented on page... that the board reserves the right that if for whatever reason any of the conditions are not met, the board has the right of review down the road. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application 2022-16, Silver Associates.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes, with the understanding that the conditions will be met to the satisfaction of our township engineer. Yes.
Mayor Figurito?
Yes.
Committeeman Bowser?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chairman Johnston?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, sir.
Is there a resolution date, or we'll get that later?
Ms. Fitzpatrick, take care of that.
Excellent, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Application, will the representative for application 2023-04 Gecko Construction please approach? Mr. Hale, how are you, sir?
Good, Mr. Chair. How are you?
Okay.
Stephen Hale, representing the applicant Gecko Construction LLC. We're here this evening before the board for a request for site plan approval, and it's in essence a change in occupancy. Just a little bit of history, this property is owned by the family that owned Andy's Auto for years, they've been in town for years and years, and this was the site of, the location of Union Fire, that business was there on that corner. And I think you'll see from our presentation, they've done a great job in renovating the building, you see, the interior looks fantastic now. And basically, what Gecko is going to use or proposing to use the property for is essentially for office and storage, no outdoor storage, very limited, low-intense use, probably somewhat similar to what Union Fire had done there. So it's a fairly small building, it's only about 1,800 square feet on a lot, it's a little over 4,000 square feet. It's in the new NC zone, neighborhood core zone, the uses is permitted in that zone. We'll have, gonna first have EKA, Joe Bachi from EKA, just take us through the site plan, and then the operator will talk a little bit about the particular use. I did have an opportunity, I know there was a question with regard to signage, I did have an opportunity to speak to Mr. Hatter, and what we'd like to do is, at this point, we'll comply with the sign ordinance, and we'll work with Mr. Hatter to work on compliance signage. If we do need relief from that sign ordinance, we'll come back to the board. I think part of it is that it's really a three-phase building, it's kind of, so we may look to have and get approved without the need for variance on multiple signs. So that's a bit of an overview of the application, and what I'd like to do first is call upon Joe Bachi, our professional engineer, to take us through the site plan. And we did have an opportunity, Mr. Hatter did supply a letter dated April 21, 2003 that Joe will review, so.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Would you please spell your name for the record?
Joseph Bachi, B-A-C-H-I.
B as in boy?
Yes.
Okay. And if you could just speak into the microphone, please?
Is that good?
Okay. Mr. Bachi, if you could please give the board the benefit of work, educational experience, area of expertise, and the fact that you've been accepted as professional engineer before other boards or courts in the state of New Jersey.
Sure. I'm a 2012 graduate of Rutgers University, BS in civil engineering, been practicing since then, about 11 years, licensed for six years, my license is active, current, in good standing. I've appeared before this board before and been accepted, as well as other boards throughout Union County and the state.
Mr. Hale, would you like Mr. Bachi to be recognized as an expert witness?
Yes, please, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supported.
Great. So Mr. Bachi, if you could first take us through, and if you need help-
Might need IT.
She's right here. You should be young enough to do this, come on.
I should be. Oh, sorry. Just needed you to walk over. So yeah, I'll walk you guys through the plans. I'll try to. Oh. Shouldn't it pop up? I'm a little embarrassed. There we go. Okay, so these were our site plans that were submitted to the board dated April 12th, 2023. This is our typical cover sheet. As Mr. Hale mentioned, this is in the NC zone, you can see in our zoning map in the center there. We have the 200-foot owners list, our general notes, our schedule of requirements, key map, title block, standard stuff. You can see that the site is bound to the north and west by, this is Vox Hill Road here and Barnett, or Burnett, and then to the south and east by commercial properties here. And I can, can zoom in for a better look there. But I'm going to jump to sheet five, the existing conditions, the survey, sheet four, rather. So this is our boundary and topographic survey dated June 21st, 2022. As you can see, a number of our variances are related to this unusual lot shape here. It has this long arc along the road here, and then two kind of straight shots here. So total area, a little over 4,000 square feet, and just the nature of the lot makes it subject to a number of variances, and I'll just list them real quick. The lot width is 28.44 feet, whereas 150 is required in this zone, lot depth of 97.34, where 100 is required. We have the existing one-story masonry building currently on site, so we have some variances, existing variances related to that. Side yard setback of only .28 feet, whereas 10 is required. Rear yard setback on this side here of 1.89, whereas 20 is required. And again, this is already developed, so we have, max building coverage is 30%, 43% is currently exists on site. Impervious coverage, 95.9%, whereas 80% is required. And then a number of parking setbacks, parking is right up against the right-of-way, so no setbacks there, whereas 10 is required for setback from the street and property line. And I'll go to our proposed plan now. Again, we're not changing much on site. And I'm staying zoomed in to the site here, but the site improvements really relate to parking and bringing the site up to ADA compliance. We're adding one ADA spot, as you can see, shown here. Limited grading to, the site's not too bad grading-wise, it's pretty flat, we're keeping it flat, just minor adjustments to make sure it's ADA compliant. New concrete pad at the entrance of the building, adding an EV parking space as well, and a total of three spaces, one which is the ADA that I mentioned, and two others. Due to this very uniquely shaped site, we're only able to fit the three spots, five are actually required per our parking calculation, but as you can see, you know, keeping the building as it is and the site as it is, there's no way to fit two other parking spots, so we are seeking relief there. As well as no parking in the front lawn, it's really nowhere else for us to put parking aside from the front, because of where the building currently is now, and the fact that it's on this uniquely shaped corner lot. I guess I'll skip the sign-
Yeah, well, correct.
Yeah, so there's some signage that Mr. Hale already talked about, that we'll comply with sign regulations and come back if needed. Aside from that, that really covers the improvements, really just site improvements from a civil perspective.
Okay. And you've had an opportunity to review the April 21, 2023 letter from Colliers, from Phil Hatter, any issues complying with any of those terms and conditions?
No issues, but I'll just touch on, I know he requested testimony regarding deliveries and pickup of trash and everything. As Mr. Hale mentioned, this is very low-intense use. I talked to the applicant, they generate, you know, almost no trash, it's not just maybe something, lunch or something, garbage from that. So they have a private company that comes during off-business hours, just comes right in the building, collects the trash and leaves, so they don't need a dumpster, there's no heavy, you know, big garbage trucks required at the site. Second comment was regarding ADA access, as I said, it is ADA compliant, and we'll add a note to the plans as requested to ensure that ADA compliance is in effect. Lighting, we're not proposing any change in lighting, we're willing to do an existing lighting study if that is something you might want, we're not proposing any, so.
We'll work with Mr. Hatter on that.
Yeah, we're happy to work with you on-
Is that the end of your testimony?
Yeah, I think we just need to be convinced that there'll be adequate lighting in the proposed parking lot area.
Understood, yeah, we'll work with you on that if that's okay. You know, whether we do an existing lighting plan or propose some lights and send you a lighting plan for approval.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Hale, and this may be reserved for your next witness there.
Sure.
You did receive a letter dated April 24th, 2023 from Mr. Hatter?
Yes.
2021.
Okay. If you go to paragraph 1.11 and 1.12, sir?
Oh, the signage.
Right.
Yes.
Is that what we were talking about?
Correct.
Yes.
So we're going to work with Mr. Hatter and Mr. Monk Guzzo to have signage that complies with the ordinance. If we feel that additional sign relief is necessary, we'd come back for amended site plan.
Yeah, you drew my attention there to-
Just to confirm then, any of the signing variant, variances that were listed in my letter, you're not requesting?
Correct. That relief is withdrawn.
Okay.
All right. I have no further questions, it's just time for Mr. Bachi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, a couple of questions. Given that there is, the spaces almost encroach on the front yard requirement, how, where's the driveway? Can you point out where the driveway is, where the cars are going to make ingress and egress?
There's a curb cut here, it's kind of, I'll zoom in a little more, you can see where it's a little hatched, I don't know if that helped or not, but it's a light hatching, because we kind of put the existing in the background, so that's the existing curb cut there.
And there's no concern that, that's Foxhole Road, is that right? Or is that Burnett?
That's Burnett.
Yeah, that's, let me zoom out now, so you can see.
That's Burnett, I think.
So that's like right in the middle of the intersection, I know that there is a traffic control light there. There's no concern that either vehicles going into or out of those parking spaces are going to have difficulty, or with traffic, depending upon what time of day it is?
I think there's adequate room to maneuver the vehicles within the parking area, and in terms of coming in and out, you'll kind of follow, you'll be guided by the traffic light, so if you have a green light, you're making a right-in from Burnett, or a green light for Vox Hill, you're making a right-in. I mean, if it's, yeah, if it's red, you're gonna, you're gonna have to kind of wait for traffic. I did speak to the applicant, there is very limited use there, there-
Has there been any conversation with the traffic division of the police department?
I have not had any.
We didn't receive any comments from them, but certainly we can work again with them, with traffic and Mr. Hatter.
It just seems like it's not directly facing either street, so it, you know, I'm just concerned about ingress, egress relative to the traffic signal and relative to the overall-
Sure.
-moving flow.
No, no problem, again, we'll touch base with-
Okay, thank you.
-both police and Mr. Hatter.
Any other questions from the board?
Not a question exactly, sir. Just wanted to call attention to, I guess, in the Collier letter, item 4.1, the permits and approvals, which include fees, and I understand there's some outstanding fees, I'm assuming that will be paid as requested. There's, apparently there's something in the letter that indicates some outstanding-
The fines.
I think everything's been paid, if not, we'll make sure that it gets paid immediately.
That'll be a condition of approval.
Oh, certainly.
Sure, okay.
Mr. Hale, were you aware of the fines that were owed, sir?
The what?
The, there's about a $4,000 fine-
Yeah, we're going to work with Mr. Monk Guzzo on that, yes.
Okay, and you'll be able to work a payment plan with that?
No problem.
Okay. And you know, that'll be condition of the-
Again, no issue.
No. Okay. No other questions from the public? Your next witness, Mr. Hale?
Yes, I'd like to now call upon Jose Rosario. And you might want to hang there, unless, Jose, are you good with tech to put up the pictures?
I'm pretty good.
Good, okay. Right, first you've got to be sworn in.
Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you please spell your name?
Jose John Rosario. R-O-S-A-R-I-O.
I'm sorry, R what?
Romeo Oscar Sierra Alpha Romeo India Oscar.
Thank you.
I was correct.
Are you a military man?
Yes, sir, 10 years, 3rd Infantry Division.
The only people who'll know that are police or military.
That's it.
Or fire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, Mr. Rosario, you're the owner of Gecko Construction Corp?
I am.
Okay. And presently, you're a tenant of the, probably you signed a lease with Mrs. Anderson, who's here this evening?
Yes.
Okay. So tell us first a little bit about the nature of your business and why this location works very well for you.
Well, first I'd like to back up a little bit. Gecko is a new company. It's, 2016 we started, it stands for Green Energy Concepts, and we knock out your utility bill, we're here to save the planet. That's all we do. We install any kind of smart devices, we do solar panels, we do green generators, anything that saves energy, okay? Again, our trucks are all electric vehicles. That's why we needed the EV, losing my voice, I'm sorry, guy, but, so what we do is, we market residential customers, and we have some commercial clients like Verizon, and what we offer them is we rewire their entire network to be smart. So we install something called Josh AI, which is an artificial intelligence for the house. It creates a system where it saves electricity, lighting, it does something called daylight harvesting, where if it's too light outside, you don't need to have the lights on. If you walk into the warehouse, the lights turn on as you go through the warehouse, and they shut off as you pass behind. This type of technology is all we do. So we have myself, my wife, Dr. Mills, losing my voice. Anyway, we have meetings with clients in the business, we show them pictures of projects we've done in the past, they hire us, we do a contract, we sit in the conference table. We have four desks in the office, it's an 1,800 square foot space that we rent, 1,000 square foot is office, 800 is warehouse. In the warehouse, we have various small, like Alexa, Amazon, whatever we use inside the house, and the four desks are my desk, my wife is the receptionist, my architect, and we have a, what do you call that, a production manager, who handles the staff. We have any type from six as the lowest to up to 15 employees at a given time. Those employees don't have to come to the office for anything, other than we might have a meeting once every few months, I believe it's, once a quarter, we have a meeting in the office in the evening. Other than that, we manage the property by appointment only, it's not an open store for people to walk in and walk out. The customer gets called in by appointment, and they attend. We do get visitors from different companies like Lucent Technologies, or a, another company that we sponsor, like Pella Window, the salesman will come in, they'll try to sell us the windows, and then we market it to our customers. So that's basically our business.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions.
Well, now, I know there's some photographs- Well, uh, now, I know there's some photographs, uh, and just, if you could show, I wonder, I think we have the, well, first tell us, you renovated both the outside and made improvements to the interior for your office?
Mr. Hale, were these previously supplied to the board, these exhibits?
We have it on the drive, but I have copies that I can provide.
We'll just mark each one.
Okay, great, so we'll mark, right. A one? A one is the photos.
This is the original building when I rented it. Um, it was in a lot of disrepair, um, it was, carpets were destroyed, it was barely livable. Um, let me share you the photos after we've invested something around thirty thousand dollars to repair the inside. How do you go to the switch? Okay, seven, two. Okay, that's the front now.
And as I indicated, we'll work with, um, Mr. Hatter and Mr. Monk Guzzo on the, on the signage package. So, there was a complete redo of the facade of the building?
Complete redo of the facade, uh, full camera system from all angles, uh, the lighting that was on the building stayed, we just replaced all the, um, lighting, uh, cells to new ones, and, um, made it so it's more energy efficient, because it had the old, uh, filament lights, so we put the new LED bulb on the same exact fixture. So, another one of the things we do is upgrade to LED lights.
Okay, and I think you have, uh, probably just one or two pictures of the interior, how you renovated that.
Did you go here? Oh, okay. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen. This is what it looks like now, sir, guys, everyone.
And that's, I assume, the reception area?
That's the reception area, and if you look at this small area right here, my, my office is about, uh, seven by ten. My closet in my house is bigger, but it's good enough for us. Uh, let me go to the next one here. This is my office.
And I think the other photos you have are just this, the storage area?
Storage area.
With the equipment that you referred to before?
Mm-hmm. This is our IT set work, network here, this tower operates everything in the building. Cameras, uh, audio/video, uh, inside we have nine televisions that all share one picture. It's just, uh, uh, audio/video. Do we have an office one? No, that's it. That's it, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, and, uh, based upon, uh, the commitment to comply with all the terms and conditions of the Colliers letter, any problem with that?
No, sir, no, sir. We'll do our best to, to comply with everything.
All right, and, uh, and again, just briefly, how does this location in Union Township work for you as far as your network of your, of both your employees and, and clientele?
Well, it's a central location that it's only two blocks away from Route seventy-eight and a few, uh, exits over from the parkway, so we have access, it's the center place, this is perfect for us. We direct people coming in, coming out, we have, uh, bus traffic if they have to come via bus, because some people do still bus in, but mostly, um, it's a central location where we have access to the supply houses, we have access to the clients and the employees, we employ people from Union, Newark, and, uh, Springfield.
Okay, and there'll be, I think this was one of the conditions, that there, there's no outside storage of any, any materials, and I assume based upon the nature of your technical business, you're not gonna be storing components outside?
No, sir, there, there's nothing and no reason to store anything, uh, the only thing that hangs on the outside is an EV, uh, electrical charger that's on the wall, and it's aesthetically pleasing.
Okay, great. I have no further questions of Mr. Rosario at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Hale, any questions from the board? Any questions from the people?
Uh, Mr. Rosario, um...
Yes, Mr. Lee.
My question pertains to the eight hundred square feet storage room?
Yes, sir.
Maybe, maybe warehouse might be a little bit too exaggeration?
Yeah, it's more of a closet.
When you really think about a warehouse, typical warehouse. Um, in terms of the inventory that you, you procure and secure and store in that place, um, what is your process or logistics in acquiring equipment, those items that you stated, to go into that storage closet?
Um, honestly, most of the time we have Amazon that gets delivered via UPS, and they'll deliver, you know, twenty Amazon, uh, you know, or, or, uh, any kind of small devices. Um, we do require to get electrical wiring, and we'll go to, uh, the supply house and bring it in on our truck. Um, we, uh, we have LED tapes and LED light bulbs and all that in, as you can see on the pictures, and they're just get stored on, uh, an eight-foot tall rack and just put into locations. We have a, a great location system where everything is, is, uh, inventory, inventory control my wife keeps. Um, what else? Really, there's not much, we buy inventory whenever we have a client, we do a bill of materials, and we put the bill of materials for the house, so we only buy for the house that we're gonna do, so we will only do perhaps eight or ten houses a year, and when we do the house, we buy everything, and then we ship it to the house or carry it to the house and, and install. Um, it's mostly wiring, CAT six, um, category six cable, uh, cameras, uh, audio/video. If we have large deliveries like TVs, we do drop-ship them directly to the, to the property, so we don't have to bring them here. Um, the office is kind of remote, there's not that much, like I said, there's only four desks, so there's not a lot of room for us to, let's say, uh, make an inventory, so...
And just a, just a follow-up to that, that means based on the testimony you've given, that you wouldn't necessarily need to, um, secure or order or ship anything that would require, you know, like a huge truck to, to deliver, um, inventory or any other, a kind of other item or materials for, for your office?
The largest piece of equipment that I install is generators, and those get drop- shipped directly to the site. We don't have any reason for them to come to the office. We have, uh, small disconnects for the electrical, we bring those into the office, um, and then wire, that's it.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Questions from the public? Okay, seen none. Uh, and just to, to confirm, Mr. Hale, we're gonna take a vote in a couple minutes, but just wanna make sure that the vote that we're taking be on the condition that, uh, paragraph one point one-one and one point one-two in Colliers' letter dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three will be, uh, satisfied?
Correct, yes.
You'll work with Mr. Hatter on that?
No problem.
And also be on the condition that the fine that's due will be paid eventually?
Correct.
And then you'll work with Mr. Hatter on that?
No problem.
Okay, may, may I have a motion, please, that application twenty-twenty, oh, and by the way, um, thank you for your interest, may I have a, uh, motion, application twenty-twenty-three dash zero four, Gecko Construction Group, be approved?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the application twenty-twenty-three oh four, Gecko Construction Group, twenty-five fifteen Foxhole Road, B five-six-zero-one-L-one, under the conditions as stated by the, by Chairman.
Second. Local call?
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Figueroa?
Yes.
Committeeman Bowser?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and appreciate your time this evening, and welcome and other business to Union, enjoy the Memorial Day weekend, take care now.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Lastly, with the representative for JP Morgan Chase, please approach.
Good evening, sir. Please place your name, please state your name for the record, please, sir.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Greg Meese, attorney for the applicant, JP Morgan Chase Bank.
Dean, how are you?
Sir, could you speak up, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, could you speak a little closer to...
Sure, I'm sorry, Greg Meese, M-E-E-S-E, attorney for JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., the applicant.
Do you like to do an opening statement, Mr. Hale?
Sure. Uh, this is an application to redevelop an existing retail site on Route twenty-two. The property is located in the center island, therefore it has two frontages, um, and that feeds into the reason why we are seeking certain relief. Significantly, there's several existing nonconformities with respect to the property. This application eliminates several of those nonconformities, reduces another. Uh, we are seeking, uh, the following variances. Maximum impervious coverage of eighty percent is allowed, we're seeking eighty-six percent, it's currently ninety-five point three percent, so we're reducing that significantly. Parking in the front yard, um, no loading space, frankly, the bank doesn't need a loading space, so we're not proposing one. Uh, and the rest of the variances are related to signage, and you'll see through the testimony of, uh, Mr. Chan as well as Mr. Lally, the architect, and Mr. Grogal, the planner, that given the location of the property and the visibility in the center island, uh, we feel that it does two things to have the signage that we're proposing. Uh, first and foremost, it's, it's traffic safety, visibility, to be able to see the bank branch, to be able to make the turn into the site. Uh, in addition to that, it's, it's, it's aesthetic. Um, there is no location on this building that can't be seen from the roadway, so in order to dress it up, the signage has been kind of built into the architecture of the building, as you'll see, it's, it's very tasteful, it's, uh, well-sized, I think the board will see that the architecture and the signage work very well together here, and to not have signage on certain, uh, elevations would make it look like we're looking at the back of a building, and, and this is one of those lots where you, you really don't have a back, uh, so, and that's where the variances come in here.
How many witnesses will we be calling?
Uh, just three, just three.
Okay.
I'd like to start with, uh, Aaron Chan, who is our civil engineer, uh, he'll review the existing site conditions, as well as the proposed site conditions, and some of the reports that were submitted, respect to drainage, traffic, and the like.
Mr. Chan, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And would you spell your last name, please?
Sure. Aaron Chan, C-H-A-N.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chan, would you very briefly review your background and experience in the field of engineering?
Of course, I'm a project engineer at Stonefield Engineering, that's located at fifteenth Spring Street in Princeton, New Jersey, have a bachelor's in civil engineering from the College of New Jersey, I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey, my license is in good standing, I've been accepted into and provided expert engineering testimony across over fifteen land use boards across the state, uh, worked on and completed over twenty, um, bank projects, all similar to the size and scope of the one before you here tonight.
Mr. Meese, would you like the board to recognize your witness as an expert witness?
I, I would.
It's an order.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chan, uh, would you please begin by orienting the board to the subject lot, explain the location in the center island of Route twenty-two, as well as the surrounding uses and the existing site development?
Of course, so I pulled up the aerial exhibit, this is an exhibit that we prepared by my office, uh, it's dated May twenty, uh, or, May twenty-second. Essentially, you're seeing the subject property highlighted in yellow, this is located on the center island on Route twenty-two, you have the eastbound direction at the bottom of the page, you have the westbound direction at the top of the page. As you can see, and then Mr. Meese has already alluded to, every side of this building is visible from the public right away, and, um, additional to that, this property is slightly undersized, it's approximately twenty-six thousand square feet, whereas the minimum lot size is forty thousand, and that comes with a lot of our existing nonconformities. And I just wanna highlight that for the record, the, the below the minimum lot size, um, it's below the minimum lot width, the impervious coverage is, um, is currently exceeding the eighty percent maximum at ninety-six percent, the building coverage slightly exceeds the maximum thirty percent at thirty-three percent, and as well as the building setbacks is currently violating the front yard setbacks. And as you know, you know, as, as it's on a divided, um, highway here, it, it does have two frontages, and it does trigger, um, it's some additional variance relief as well.
And out of, out of those existing, uh, nonconformities, the proposal is to eliminate several of them, is that right?
Sure, yeah, I'll get to the, get to the variances that we will be, um, eliminating as part of the proposed conditions, but I just wanna walk through the rest of the existing conditions here. The property is currently accessed via two curb cuts, uh, one on each side of the highway here, and we'll be proposing to keep those, um, open. And just to give the board a little bit more orientation, to the north of us here, um, across the highway is the Mercedes dealership, and to the east of us is the Verizon store, to the south is the, uh, Michael Anthony Furniture Store, as well as the kitchen and tile store, and to the west we have the, the IHOP restaurant, and Wendy's just beyond that. Um, and to demonstrate the proposed condition, let me pull up our site plan rendering here.
Can I, may I just interrupt, has this aerial exhibit already been presented to the board, or is this something new tonight that we need to mark?
This will be new.
Okay, so can we mark this exhibit A-one, please?
A-one, sure.
And, Mr. Chan, I'm not sure if you mentioned the, the size of the existing retail store?
The size of the existing retail store is approximately nine thousand square feet, and what that has is, um, as well as parking along, along the sides of the property, as well as up against the building, and in addition to that, there's two, um, existing freestanding signs, pretty much pressed against the frontage here, and the thing I wanna know about these signs is that they're currently, the overall sign height is around fifteen to twenty feet tall, generally consistent with the other signs in the area along this corridor, and additionally, the, the, um, the concrete foundation for these side, signs actually extend into some of our cross-access aisles, um, and I'll go into the proposed signage in a little bit later, but we will be proposing to kind of shrink that down and push it a little bit closer to the frontage, so that's out of the way of the circulation aisles around the site, so it does not propose, um, any obstruction to the traffic in the So the second, uh, second exhibit I'll introduce is the site plan rendering, this is prepared on the same day, May twenty-second, by Stonefield Engineering, and this will be marked Exhibit A-two.
Thank you.
And what this is, is the submitted site plan, and we just took the liberty of adding a little bit of color, um, adding a little bit of greenery as well, as well as the vehicle queuing, just so the board can clearly see what, what it is we're, we're presenting here.
Ouch.
And the applicant is proposing to construct a thirty-two hundred square foot Chase branch, uh, this will have a, um, single drive-up ATM that's on the right-hand side of the store, that's the, uh, of the branch, that's on the eastern facade, and along with that, we have some, um, associated improvements such as our typical parking, um, some mild snowwater conveyance work, lighting upgrades as always, and, um, landscaping is being proposed as part of this application as well. And to sort of go into, um, a little bit more about the variance, uh, existing nonconformities that we are reducing, pretty much every single of the nonconformities, um, aside from the, the lot size and the lot width, as we're not changing the shape of the lot, we're, we're eliminating. And what that means is we are, the, the yard, the front yard setbacks and, um, those variances being eliminated, and the only, only bulk control that we will seek relief from is the impervious coverage, and as Mr. Meese has already alluded to, we are reducing it from ninety, ninety-six percent, um, approximately ten percent, down to eighty-six percent coverage, um, and that slightly still exceeds the, the eighty percent maximum is, is allowed by the township ordinance. There'll be a total of twenty-one parking spaces, uh, proposed along the building, and unfortunately, as we do have, uh, two, two frontages, there are, there is parking on the, in the front yard, um, that we'll seek relief from, and there simply, it just isn't any other places to put them on this property. And this, uh, like, slightly exceeds the township requirement of nineteen parking spaces, and this twenty-one space is sort of a sweet spot for, for Chase Banks. Additionally, we are proposing a trash enclosure on-site, in the existing condition, there's two open dumpsters on the southern side of the property, we're proposing a enclosed, a masonry block wall with, uh, with a gate in the front, so it provides a little bit of screening, provides a little bit of, um, containment for any of the, the refuse. And speaking on the freestanding signs, touched on it previously, so those foundation blocks are currently extending into those cross, uh, cross, uh, circulation aisles around the property. What we have selected here is a narrower sign, it's a much narrower profile, it's only around two and a half feet wide inside, so it's a very slim Chase, um, branding sign, it has the Chase logo as well as the text, and we've actually had to move it a little bit closer towards the frontage, and what that allowed us to do is to get that obstruction out of the, out of the circulation aisles, and, um, and it provides the visibility that Mr. Meese has alluded to, to provide safe navigation for any motorists traveling to, to the property. Um, this sign is, is slightly exceeding the township ordinance for the maximum height, it's a thirteen feet tall, where... It's thirteen feet tall, whereas ten is permitted. We felt that this was appropriate due to the, the commercial corridor of this vicinity, is that a lot of the existing signs here are actually fifteen to twenty feet tall. So we're actually kind of competing for visibility here. And we felt that, again, this was appropriate since the maximum permitted area is sixty square feet. And this blade sign, it's actually much smaller, under the allowable area at thirty-seven square feet. And there will be one sign on the, on westbound, and also one freestanding sign on the, on the eastbound. As lightly discussed, the impervious coverage on-site is being reduced, so that brings a lot of natural enhancements to the stormwater runoff, to the stormwater quality, as well as the recharge. And along with that added green space, we're actually reducing it by around twenty-five hundred square feet, equivalent of around fifteen standard-sized parking spaces. And with that green space being added back, we're proposing some landscaping where we can. We're adding shrubbery and greenery to the parking, to break up some of those parking stalls, which is much needed in this particular corridor, as well as a tree on-site. And, and there will be shrubs also along the trash enclosure to sort of provide a little bit more beautification, as well as aesthetic appeal to the overall property, and kind of break up that facade for the trash enclosure to the north of the, of the building. Lighting on-site is going to be provided with eight poles and a mix of building-mounted lights. And this design is generally compliant with the township regulation. The, the fixture height, the maximum is allowed is actually twenty-five feet. We're mounting it a little bit higher, I'm sorry, a little bit lower at seventeen feet. And it generally meets the, the minimum, as well as the lighting values across the property. And where we would require a little bit of relief is with the point-five-foot candles at the property line. Again, this is a slightly undersized property located on a commercial corridor. There are no residences in this vicinity, so do not feel like it would be a particular nuisance with the lighting. And additionally, it is required for, you know, ATM and financial institutions to have a certain minimum amount of illumination just to provide security across the property for anybody, you know, doing financial transactions at those ATMs. And it's also important to note that, you know, that particular, the foot candles, though, is slightly exceeded at the property line. By the time it gets to the curb line of the traveled way on Route 22, it drops to point one, so much, much lower than that point five as required by the township ordinance. And, and that's also the reason we decided to mount those lights much lower than the allowable twenty-five feet, at seventeen feet, with back shields on it, so it does not prevent, present any glare to the traveling public.
Just if I can state, the, the state regulation that Mr. Chan referred to is found in the Administrative Code, Section Seventeen, Coen Sixteen K dash ten, and it's a minimum lighting standard around ATMs. And as Mr. Chan indicated, it's for safety purposes.
Sure. And just for reference, the, that particular requirement is ten-foot candles within five feet of the ATM, so that's much, much higher than the point-five that's allowed. And, you know, as you, as I noted, there is an ATM sort of by where that blue car is, so that's kind of pressed up against the, against the property line. So it's very easy to, to see how it could sort of spill over the property line. But again, you know, all the existing, all the adjacent neighbors are commercial properties, so we do not anticipate that this will be a nuisance.
Mr. Chan, just to confirm, the ATM on the side of the building is not a window, it's not an active window, it's just a drive-up ATM?
That's correct. It's a drive-up ATM, it's through the wall ATM, there's no teller service in that window. And we felt that, you know, in, in recent times, that there's a lot of move towards mobile, mobile banking, virtual banking. There's actually less of a need for, for, you know, in physical presences, so, you know, felt that the five to six car queue is appropriate for this particular property.
And there is a bypass around this, so circulation is not impeded by that.
That's correct. And what you're seeing is the bypass lane is actually to the right of those, that vehicle stack. So vehicles can circulate about the, about the property without any obstruction. And getting to, and finally getting to the traffic component, as we already started discussing. So this particular access is going to be maintained. There's those two curb cuts I initially alluded to. And the trip generation associated with a, with a bank of this size is actually, at most, eighty-four trips. That's during the Saturday midday, so typically that's your weekend, you know, you need to make some financial transactions and, and whatnot. What we found is that these values come from the I.T.E. manual, which is the industry standard for anticipating the number of trips being generated with these type of uses. And as I, as I noted, there is a move towards that mobile banking. People are depositing checks on their phone. There's actually a lot of, that can be done from, from your hand, from your home, and such. So that actually, we actually see that empirically, the, the trip generations for real, real-world sites is actually much lower than that, than that eighty-four trips. And just want to know, you know, that's under a hundred-trip threshold, and that's sort of where we, DOT starts to draw the line, where they would consider any kind of potential impact to this vicinity. So as such, we're below that, and that's the highest amount on the weekday, weekday evening peak hour. It's actually at sixty-seven trips being generated, and that accounts for actually both entering and exit, so that counts as two. So effectively, this is very diminished as far as traffic is concerned. We understand that Route 22 is a heavily traveled corridor, but this, this Chase bank, very, very small drop in the bucket as far as the overall traffic's concerned.
And your review did not even take into consideration any of the existing traffic from the retail store?
That's correct. We, we assumed there was nothing on-site, and we analyzed the trip generation, assumed it was a blank slate, and we just added all of the, all of the, the trips being generated with the Chase. If you assume the existing retail store, the suit store, obviously they do have some trips, they have customers as well throughout the day, you know, there is a smaller delta effectively. And on-site, you know, the circulation pattern generally gets maintained, the cross-axis pattern gets maintained as well, sort of from a driver expectancy scenario, it's very familiar to, it is pretty much exactly the same as what they're used to with the added bypass lane that provides a little bit more circulation across the site. We made it actually a little bit safer by removing the, the concrete foundation out of that drive aisle as well. So all in all, this is very much within industry standards, and we do not anticipate any kind of traffic-related concerns.
And related to that, there is a variance to not have a loading dock, and is that because the, the bank doesn't require a loading dock?
That's correct. The, the bank simply just doesn't need it, so they would hate to dedicate impervious coverage space to something that's not, not required. Yes, correct. I would just like to briefly review the, the engineer's review letter. And, and pretty much in summary is, we have reviewed all of the comments made by Mr. Hatter, and we have no issues with complying with any of the comments being made, and we're happy to work a little bit further with this office to get them concluded.
Well, that's good.
Questions from the board? Questions from the public? Mr. Meese, your next witness, please.
Thanks, Chairman. Jim Lally, the project architect, our next witness. Thank you, Mr. Chan.
Good evening.
Give the race your name for the record, please.
James Lally, L.A.L.L.I.
Mr. Lally, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Lally, would you please very briefly review your background and experience in the field of architecture?
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Architecture from the New York Institute of Technology. Registered architect in the state of New Jersey for the last twenty-three years. I'm also registered in twenty-five other states throughout the country. I've presented before numerous boards in the state of New Jersey, and I've been working with Chase and on the Chase account for the past thirty years.
Mr. Meese, would you like the board to recognize your witness as an expert witness?
I would, thank you.
It's an order.
Mr. Lally, would you very briefly review with the board the architecture of the bank, and pay in particular reference to the integration of the signage on the building that are proposed here, because there are some variances related to the signage?
Sure. As stated earlier, we're, we're building a new bank on this site, about thirty-two hundred square feet, typical banking services, drive-up ATM, as we discussed earlier. There's also a twenty-four-hour vestibule ATM that's accessible as well. Building has, as you can see from the elevations, a modern look with some varied materials. I'll review those. Looking at the...
Just to be clear, this was already, this exhibit was already presented to the board, correct?
Correct.
This was submitted, yes.
Let's start with the, the west elevation. This faces the parking lot. This is the main entry to the bank. So you see some of the materials here on the, on the entry tower itself and along the building facade. It's a nichihua panel system. It's basically a cement-type panel system. Does not overlap. They're basically planks that are installed on the building facade. Very clean look with like a wood grain look to it as well. We have two colors there, the brown bark color and a gray ash color. You can see on this elevation here, the facade varies with the entry towers, kind of break up the horizontal of the facade. We have black storefront throughout the building, black canopies over the entries and the ends of the building. And then on the corner of the building, some ACM panels around the, this is actually a conference room in the bank. It kind of pops out a little bit, gives it a little bit of interest there. Here we see our first sign. There's four signs on the building. This is the largest sign in the building at thirty-six point nine square, square feet. The letters are twenty-four inches, and the octagon's a little bit taller, around two feet, seven inches. And that, we use that to identify the entry. We build up the tower there, so we can have the sign over the front door, basically. The north and south elevation are very, very similar to each other. These elevations, these two elevations are the ones that face the two street frontages. So we created a tower element there as well on each side, similar to the main entry of the building. You see the same nichihua panels. All three towers are the same color, the gray ash. And we see the signs here to identify the building along Route 22 on, on both sides. These signs are a little bit smaller. There are twenty-four, I don't want to misstate... These have twenty-inch letter sets instead of twenty-four. The octagon's a little bit bigger at twenty-four inches. And these are twenty-five point six square feet, as opposed to the other sign, which was thirty-six point nine. So they're a little bit smaller. And then we also have another sign on the east elevation. This is the drive-up elevation. On this elevation, as well as the two front elevations, you see our stone finish. It's a chiseled limestone finish. That stone is twelve inches tall by twenty-four inches long, and they're kind of stacked, stacked on each other. We have the same nichihua element at the drive-up ATM, and then we have the sign up into the right of that, kind of to identify that side of the building, and it helps identify the location of the ATM as well.
And Mr. Lally, on the roof of the building, where your mechanical equipment is kept?
Yeah, so the mechanical equipment will be on the roof. We typically place that behind the tall parapets, the tall towers. We want those screened from any view from the street. So the, you know, the, the tower parapets are the tallest at nineteen feet, nineteen, twenty-one feet, six inches. So we tend to place them behind those, so we don't see them from the street.
And with respect to the signage, would you say that the sign is, is well-sized and integrated into the design of the building?
Yeah, we, we try to keep the, the signage to the standard signage factor, as well as develop the towers to, you know, have the signs fit within the architecture of the building and the scale of the building. So that's why we see this, you know, some of the smaller ones in the smaller towers, and the largest one over the entry to identify the entry. There's also two smaller drive-up directional signs within the site that directs you around to parking and the ATM. They're three feet tall, and they're about two point three square feet. Not seen from the streets, really, just directional signs once you're inside the site to kind of guide you around the building. And I think the two pylon signs were talked about earlier. It's a vertical blade design at each street front, just a little over thirteen feet tall, I believe, and about two feet, eight inches wide. The square footage of those are thirty-six point seven square feet.
And Mr. Chairman, just before Mr. Lally steps away or to answer questions, just to identify the specific variances related to the signage. Your code would allow two wall signs. We are proposing four, as indicated, one on each facade. The maximum area on the south elevation is twenty-five square feet, and the proposal is twenty-five point six square feet. So it's kind of a de minimis exception. That's the same also on the north elevation, twenty-five point six versus twenty-five. And then on the east elevation, as Mr. Lally indicated, that's the larger sign, thirty-six point nine.
West elevation, larger.
On the west?
Yeah.
Okay. And then with respect to the ground sign that was spoken earlier, the height is thirteen point six one rather than ten. And again, that's a, the blade sign as opposed to a lollipop pylon sign. We thought that was better on this, on this application. And only one ground sign would be permitted. We are seeking two, one on each of the facades. And lastly, the, the setback of the sign as indicated by Mr. Chan, fifteen feet would be required, and five feet is proposed for the freestanding sign.
Any further questions from your witnesses?
No, I don't. Any questions of Mr. Lally?
Questions from the board? Questions from the public? Okay, Mr. Meese, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final witness is Paul Greigle, land use planner.
Mr. Greigle, please pronounce your name for the record, please.
Yes, good evening. It's Paul Greigle, G.R.Y.G.I.E.L.
Mrs. Patrick, please.
Sir, will you raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony you're going to give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Greigle, would you very briefly review your background and experience in the field of land use planning?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in New Jersey. I have been since nineteen ninety-nine. I'm a principal of the Phillips Price Planning and Real Estate Consulting Firm in Hoboken. However, my practice takes me throughout the state before, I've been before this board and Union Zoning Board and accept as an expert, as well as over a hundred and fifty other boards, give or take, throughout the state. And I have a Bachelor of Arts in Urban Studies from Rutgers, and a Master of Regional Planning from the University of North Carolina.
Thank you.
Mr. Meese, would you like the board to recognize your witness as an expert witness?
I would, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's an order, please proceed.
Mr. Greigle, you've, you're familiar with the Union Township Master Plan and zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Recently adopted?
Yes, reviewed them both as updated, correct.
You're also familiar with the, the application that's submitted. You heard all the testimony this evening with respect to the site plan items, as well as the architectural items?
Correct. I've reviewed that. I've visited the site and surrounding area. I live in Union County. I've been by there numerous times in the past fifteen or twenty years.
Have you heard testimony tonight that would support the relief requested by the applicant?
Yes.
Could you review that and state why you feel the relief should be granted?
Certainly. I can be, I think relatively brief. The properties in the CC corridor commercial zone, the use of a bank is permitted. As was mentioned, we comply with most of the bulk standards. The ones that are not met that remain, one, lot area and lot width are not changing. So if there was a variance for those, it'd be a C-one hardship. The site is surrounded by roads and other properties that are developed. The other hardship variance, in my opinion, is with regard to the parking in the front yard. You have two frontages along Route 22. So essentially, the majority of the parking spaces are outside the front yards, but really it's difficult to comply and to provide the parking that's required for this use without encroaching into the front yard. That said, they are still setback the parking spaces thirty-four feet from the front lot lines, the closest point. So we do believe we meet the intent. It's just there's not enough room, frankly, on the site to have a permitted use and required parking without that variance being granted. The other variances being sought, in my opinion, all can be granted under the C-two criteria, that there's benefits from the proposal that would substantially outweigh any detriments, and that certain purposes of zoning would be advanced. So first, I'll just quickly list through the variant, the specifics of the variances and why I believe they are met. With the impervious coverage, we've already heard, we're reducing it significantly. We're not coming into compliance, but are providing reduced paved areas. I think that's a benefit, as well as improved aesthetics and site design. Certainly, what's proposed in terms of the building and, and the landscaping being added, et cetera, are subsequent upgrades over existing conditions. With regard to loading spaces, we've heard, it's my experience as a planner, that banks do not need a full-size loading space, given the type and nature of deliveries. Signage, we've just heard a lot of testimony regarding that, but just to sum it up on that again, the, the wall signage is appropriate for the building design, as well as to provide still for adequate identification of the property. In terms of the size of the signage, again, it might be slightly exceeding the maximum permitted for the east elevation, but it's, it's consistent with the design of the building as shown on the exhibit. And the other signage, again, it exceeds the number, but we believe, I believe, that it's appropriate, given the visibility of this property and the building in particular. The ground signs, Mr. Meese already has mentioned a few times. Our other witnesses talked about it. The blade sign is shorter than what's out there today. It's an improvement in terms of providing for a setback that's compliant, providing for identification along a busy highway on both frontages. So I think in summary, with regard to the signage, I can go into more detail if there are questions, but I think overall, there are substantial benefits from providing this permitted use in the property, upgrading the appearance and the operation of the site, essentially having a less impactful use in terms of number of trips, the size of the building, et cetera, on the property, which is appropriate. And overall, I think the benefits from this development being approved... And overall, I think the benefits from this development being approved without any detriments, given the location in a commercial corridor. So I think purposes of zoning being advanced include, A, promoting the general health, safety and welfare by providing for this use, Purpose G of the land use law, providing for sufficient space for commercial uses of this type, and Purpose I, a desirable visual environment. Just very briefly, in the negative criteria, we need to demonstrate there's no substantial impact to the public good. Again, I think everything we've heard already, we've seen, shows that there'd be no substantial impacts despite not meeting all the zoning standards. And likewise, with regard to the master plan and zoning ordinance, even though we don't meet all the standards, I think the deviations are warranted, given the specifics of the site and property, so there'd be no substantial impact to the master plan or zoning of the township.
Any questions to Mr. Greigel?
Questions from the board? Questions from the public? No further witnesses, Mr.?
No further witnesses, and I'll be very brief with the summation. I think the board will find this application was very well-conceived from the beginning. I think Chase did a good job of designing a building for the site, appropriate signage for the site, appropriate parking circulation, and I think there's a, as Mr. Greigel indicated, a far superior layout and design than what you have today with the reduction in all of the variances that are currently out there today. So we'd ask you to vote in favor of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Mies. As for motions for Application 2023-05, the approved?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Application 2023-05, J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, N.A. And whereas the board is very cognizant and careful with our signage, the uniqueness of the location of this property, I believe justifies it, and therefore, I move that way to the record.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Second, please?
Second.
Real call vote, please.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Figurito?
Yes.
Committeeman Bowser?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Jim Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your weekend.
No other items on the agenda, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned.